Okay, I'm gonna call this public hearing to order if we can stand up. Let's have a flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So this is a public hearing on the zoning revision, which has been going on for years. But we are nearing the end and there are nine articles in the zoning revision. The first three we're doing tonight. So I am first gonna remind people this is a public hearing, which means it's our chance to hear from the board, the public. So it isn't a discussion for us. It'd be best if we actually just heard from the public. So I also, because the size of the crowd, am asking that everyone speak once and go about three minutes-ish. But I won't be a stickler on that. I am gonna start by giving it over to Mr. Werner. Oh, and Carol needs to read the public hearing first, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no worries. Please take notice that the town of Clinton will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, April 8th, 2025, at the Town of Clinton Town Hall, 1215 Center Road, Reinbeck, in the Town of Clinton, New York, at 6:00 PM prevailing time or as soon thereafter as the matter has been reached on the agenda concerning the proposed revised zoning law, Articles 1, 2, and 3 pursuant to Article 16 of New York Town Law. Complete copies of this proposed local law are available at the Town of Clinton Town Council Office and the town website for inspection during regular business hours. All interested persons and citizens shall have an opportunity to be heard on the first three articles of the zoning law at the date, time, and place afforded.
Thank you, Carol. I'll hand it over to Elliot.
Okay, just wanted to make a, give a short history of what's been going on here for the past 13 years. We started this in 2013 with a committee, the zoning revision committee, that was appointed by Jeff Burns, who was a supervisor at the time, and then subsequently Ray Oberly, who added a couple of people to that committee. We worked with our town planner, Neil Wilson, to come up with a draft of the existing law, the one that you can find on the town website. He made a pass through it, made many suggestions, went to the committee. We looked at it once or twice a month for a period of several years, came up with a document that we all found agreeable, satisfactory, however you want to call it, and presented it to the town board. The town board did essentially the same thing that we did with a series of workshops that also went on for a period of three or four years. I believe we were meeting at least once a month, perhaps twice a month. Finally came through to the end. And then things sort of stopped because of COVID and various other things. The document that you are looking at now and that you will, documents that you will be seeing over the course of the next several months include one set of changes, one set of questions that came from our town attorney, who is looking at it now. But his changes, you have to understand, and his corrections or suggestions are the fourth stop in the process. They do not reflect, well, I'm sorry, no, they do reflect, I'm sorry. They do not highlight the changes that were made by any of the people who looked at it before, either the zoning revision committee or the town board or the planner. Those changes have been discussed. The ones that were accepted have been incorporated into the text. But if you pick up that text, the one that's on the back table, and read it, you will know what those changes are. All you will know is what the town attorney is proposing. If you really want to get into the weeds, the way to see what's been happening the past 13 years is to go on the town website, pull up the code, and compare the two. And then you will see completely what has changed and what has remained the same. Okay, I just wanted to make sure people understand that because you're gonna look at that piece of paper and say, "Well, there's only three changes here. How come it took 14 years?" Well, because there are a lot of other changes made before these last three changes. Okay, so I just want to make sure everybody understands we're on a level playing field here and we know what's going on.
Thank you. Make a motion to open the floor to public comments. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion carried. Everyone has a free rein. Go ahead, Supervisor Oberly.
Three minutes, three minutes is gonna be a little short. I'll leave it up to you to figure out what the comments are. You got all the details there that I did.
Get in the microphone.
Is it on?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, I can't hear it. Okay, one general comment. It's very difficult to make comments to the document. You need to do two things next time you do this. One, number all the pages so they're all numbered and everybody can talk to the page. And two, there's a feature in Word that you can number all the lines so I could give you a reference to a page and a line where the corrections or changes should be suggested. In my particular document, unfortunately, it wasn't covered, colored. It wasn't printed in color, so you don't see the yellow, but you'll see the 15 comments that I have in there. Some of them are just typo errors that I found. Some are technical questions that obviously need answers and you can read them and figure it out. The biggest general comment I have on the whole thing, and I didn't identify it to each page and element of the document here, is we stress greatly in the everything that we want a rural character of the town. And yet, we are going to, over the past few years, going to great lengths of adding the requirement of fencing everything in, either with a berm, with a wooden fence, landscape fence, or a plastic fence. This is not keeping the town in the rural character that we want. Consider the white plastic fences being the most economical and longer lasting. It's gonna look like heck. It's gonna look like a bunch of cubes all over the place as you'll put more and more requirements on everything that needs to be fenced in, like parking lots and other document, other buildings and everything else. I think that's unreasonable. I know where it's coming from. It's coming from the new people moving into town, not knowing what rural community is. I've been here a few years, so I know what the rural community and watched all the farming change. But I strongly suggest that we reduce the requirements of having to have fencing around almost everything that exists. They didn't do it in the past and that's why people said they want to come here where it's rural. And it ain't rural anymore as you put more fences in. So I'll save my three minutes and let you read. You can call me if you have any understanding of what I wrote there. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray.
Hi, excuse me. My name is Cynthia Cook and I live on Willow Lane. And I remember this process and I have been in the room listening to much of what's been going on. Excuse me, I'm sorry. And I wanted to begin to understand, when I looked at the document, how the final proposed document is different from the existing document. And I am sad, distressed, and vehemently opposed to presenting the document without a way for readers to understand that how this iteration, the one that has gone through the lawyer and has gone through committee as well as board approval. But still, the residents deserve to know how this differs. They shouldn't have to sit and look at the original against what you are presenting, for example. Now, I'm very interested, as you might guess, in aspects of the historic preservation. That's not in this section, but hamlets are. And I remember the discussion on hamlets. And here's what happened, if I can read it. Under access, paragraph 1, C1. "To the extent practical, new buildings should front on new interior roads and not on county or town roads." "Should" is in this version. "Shall" is in the original version. "Any new interior roads should be built with provisions for pedestrian accessway and the planning board may require street trees, sidewalks, and on-street parking." The original was "shall." I don't know what the "may," I understand, was added by the planner. I don't know what the original was on that. Then we go on. "Where appropriate, adjacent non-residential parking and circulation routes should be interconnected to limit access points onto main roads." The original was "shall." "The planning board is authorized to require..." Oh, and that paragraph ends with that. But there are instances, and I don't want to bore you by going through the whole thing. But it is my recollection that as this process went on, certainly in the areas that I was concerned about, there was a tendency to make them less restrictive. So a lot of ways in which things were said "shall" were turned into "should." And now, that difference between the original and what is being proposed is not available. Now, I'm aware, I don't know how to do it, but I'm aware that you can take two identical documents and run them through a Microsoft program and you ought to be able to pick out the differences between the two of them. I think it would be well worth the time for somebody to do that so that the community can have a sense of the changes that are being ultimately proposed after all these years of hard work. And I meant to start, and I'm gonna say it now as I close. Congratulations on bringing this forward after all these long years. It's really a wonderful achievement. So thank you.
Thanks. I would like to mention that the the Chair of the Zoning Revision Committee, who is no longer on this board, I was handed off a PDF of what had been changed without tracking changes. So I agree with that comment. I did the best I could and sent it to our attorney, who then made his comments. But I do not have a document that tracked changes.
I was gonna ask, and I apologize for not looking before the meeting. When we were going through this process, all the files were on the website. Each section that we looked at and each, all of the changes. I believe that's all still there and available?
Yeah.
But they're updated. They were updated as we went along without indicating changes that were made.
Yeah.
There was no point in the process where...
The changes were never added.
Exactly.
So the original is on the website, the original law, and I, there were no track changes, so it was sent to the attorney, already changed, and he gave his comments.
Catherine, the only track changes version that exists was when Neil Wilson did his very first pass back in 2014. He went, he took the existing code, converted it to a Word file, went through it, and marked it up with red highlighting. From that point forward, there were no track changes.
Okay, I just didn't know that all those files were on the website, so I didn't realize it wouldn't solve the problem.
No, that would not solve the problem.
I actually have a version. I don't think it's the final version that has track changes in it.
That was one that the planner did years ago.
So that, but, I really do think that it's worth looking into having a version generated, having these two versions generated by a computer programmer. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. We have, and there's someone else.
Hi, Jeff Newman, Zoning Administrator. I just had one sort of general thought to share that this process started, as has been noted a number of times, so many years ago, based on the comprehensive plan that was done 12 years ago. And being that their comprehensive plan is supposed to be done every 10 years, we're due now for a new comprehensive plan. And just as we're going through this process to finally finish this revision, just to put it to all of yous at town board to really focus on the process going forward so that we can prioritize a new comprehensive plan that will then also result in potential additional zoning revisions based on that comprehensive plan. And we could just end up in this loop of, you know, having spent 13 years on this document, on these revisions, moving into something that becomes equally outdated should the process take equally as long. And so whatever resources are out there for doing those comprehensive plans, I would encourage the time to explore.
Move it along quickly.
Yes, yes. Thanks. Sorry, but it is good to see us moving forward with this finally after a week.
Thank you.
So thank you very much for that.
Charlie Canham, Longview Road. Just a follow-up to Jeff's comments. It does not bother me that this revision is taking place before the comprehensive plan. Comprehensive plan tends to be in fairly broad language. I hope that basically the folks working on the comprehensive plan, and it's a major effort, will have, in one hand, the current zoning law and say, "To what degree is what we envisioned for the town? Where exactly in the zoning law is there an inconsistency?" Because right now, as a member of the ZBA, I don't find the comprehensive plan, it's actually not what I'm allowed to use. I use the zoning law to look at the factors. So if there's a mismatch, I would like to see this iteration in place and then the comprehensive plan people can sit down and say, "Where are there mismatches?"
Thank you, Charlie. Anyone, yes? Yeah?
I'm representing a number of residents from the Browns Pond area. As you know, there's a number of things happening there. One thing I want to know is...
Please, may I have your name, please?
Oh, sure, my fault. It's Steven with PH Lark. One thing I just want to tell the board is there's an expectation that the law to include Browns Pond in the Conservation Agricultural Residential District, just speaking toward the importance of Browns Pond and the interconnectivity of Browns Pond with other water streams that are moving through. So we just want to make sure that Browns Pond is being included in that. Obviously, everyone's aware of the land and water connectivity there. And so, again, speaking for the neighbors, we just want to ensure that Browns Pond's included in that.
Thank you. Thank you, Steven. Anyone else?
Well, while you're thinking, I did want to share. So the days of phone a friend may be over, but the days of email a friend still exist. And I emailed someone who has a lot of experience after I got several emails from town residents, which I thank you for, about Browns Pond. And this is what, the information that was shared with me. Browns Pond is large enough that it is covered by a 100-foot buffer. Our law does not single out Dutchess County significant areas specifically, so it may not be appropriate to add it to a jurisdictional map that is designed to show all areas covered by 250-78, which, if you are not familiar, is the wetlands law. The only Conservation Residential District, or CAR, in the town is the large area centered around Silver Lake and Long Pond. That area is quite unique biologically, in large part because of the, I'm gonna struggle over this one, calcareous bedrock that runs underneath the lakes. That's not the case for Browns Pond. In fact, the area around Browns Pond is hilly enough that there is relatively little wetland in its immediate upstream watershed. So just to speak to your request, and as I said, we got several emails, this biologist does not agree, which is not to say what's gonna happen, but I just wanted to share.
Thank you, Catherine. Anyone else? Ray, you have eight minutes.
Ray sent comments on all of the sections to me.
Thank you for reading that.
Ray Oberly, Fiddler's Ridge Road. I do have comments. Some of them are what I call typo errors and stuff like that, so I'm not even gonna talk to that one. But I'll refer to the ones that are a question that you need to do more detail on. On Article 1, Page 1, Item 1, at the very top of the page there, at the end of the first paragraph, you'll see a number 1, okay? "We should add land to the value thing. You just have buildings. It should say buildings and land."
I have a pen.
Okay, that's what that one says. The next one is on Page 1, number, it's Item 2. Down near the very middle, you'll see 2, okay? It references a transportation system. We have no transportation system that I know of in the town. So I suggest that it be replaced with road network. We have roads and we have a network, but we don't have transportation. Okay? The next one comes out to be on Page 1, line, Note 3, that's near the very bottom, about three quarters of the way down on the right side. "What is the median value that you use? Is it the county, town, or federal value? It's not specified." Now, you may have stated it in definitions, but I don't have definitions, so I can't argue that one. But you gotta have, which one are you using? Because they're not the same all the time and some of them don't exist. So that's the reason for that one. Yeah, on Page 1, at the very bottom, Number 4, it says, let's see, I said, "Replace with small hamlet." We don't want hamlet design to be like a rural character, which is what it says right now. You want it to be a hamlet design. Rural character would have pastures and cows and all other things involved in it. You want it to be more compact. So that's my suggestion on that one. The other one is on Page 2, Number 5, which is up near the top. It says "welfare." I don't know how we do welfare in town. I can't read the dictionary. My vision's not that good. But I don't understand how welfare should be in there. Somebody may have some real reason for it, but I can't understand it. Okay, so let me go to the next one.
How are you defining welfare when you ask that question?
Huh?
What's your definition of welfare when you're asking that question?
I don't know. I was gonna look it up in the dictionary.
Well, it's meant as well-being. I think it's meant as well-being or health, health, safety, and well-being, you could say.
I'm just saying, I didn't see that. I just didn't know what definition you were working under.
All right, fair enough.
Welfare maybe, but I just can't read those kind of dictionaries at this point. Okay, on Page, Article 2, Page 3, Number 1. Okay, "Should allow walk-in sheds." Up in that, in that section, you'll see exactly where the little number is. Should allow walk-in sheds. Because that's what you have in farm areas. And people don't always consider them buildings. The next one is on Article 3, Page 2, Number 1. It references wetlands. Which wetlands are you referring to? Town, New York State, or federal? They are different and significantly different. If you ever looked at the federal wetlands, they look like a tiger with all the spots all over and some of them are only four foot by five foot. Small little spots, but they're wetlands. So which ones are you talking about? And that should be consistent throughout other parts of the document, but I'm just using it because that's where I caught it there. So which one do you want? The other one is on Page 3, Line, Number 2. You put 3,000 feet, square feet, rather. Now, does that include surrounding buildings or only the primary residence? It doesn't make it clear which it is. In other words, if I have a running shed and I have a house, is it 3,000 feet for the two together or just only the house? It's not clear. On Page 3, Number 3, is an apartment allowed over a commercial business restaurant, whatever feature you could have. It says you can have so many houses in that area, but it doesn't say, "Can I have the duplex arrangement?" Because that's always never been stated too much in any of the prior laws. And then on Page 3, Number 4, I suggest changing rhythm to spacing. In other words, the location of houses along the hamlet area should have some sort of uniform spacing or whatever you want to call it. I just didn't like rhythm because it doesn't have a beat. The next one is is add or include, that's on Page 3, Item 5, internet, TV internet, cable, telephone wires and stuff like that. Someone may miss not including that in utilities. Some do, some don't, unless you want to put it under definitions and that would then take care of that. The other one, which is really weird and we had a lot of discussion over it, is Page 4, Number 6. "Why do you force people to put windows on different sides of the building that serve no functional purpose other than you said you want windows there? This disrupts the utilization of that room. If it were a bedroom or something like that on that side? I don't want five windows in my bedroom. One is more than adequate, maybe two. But to have them defined around the building in the parking area and all, I see no benefit to the homeowner. And I don't understand, when it first came through, we argued over it and somehow it's got left in."
All right, Ray, we have about a minute left.
Okay. The next two are typo errors. The next two are typo errors. Page Seven, Number Nine. I don't know. It's not clear if you are requiring imitation trees for cell towers or not. A poor cell tower trees. They are terrible. They destroy the environment. You can see them a mile away, so they don't hide anything. A straight pole is better.
I think Ray is right.
Okay, I'll stop so you can read the rest.
Thank you, Ray.
Thank you, Ray.
Thank you.
Do you have a comment?
Just want to get understanding. The red line in here, is that the, is that the only change or that's from the, because I'm looking at, let's say, 250-15.
I can't remember if you were here, Arlene. So we didn't have a document that tried changes. So the red lines are only the comments from Shane on the final document.
Yeah, because like 250-15, like 250-15, the red line, scenic, like on Letter B, the location, it used to be like 3,000 from the Conic State Park. Right now, it's 2,000.
Yeah.
It just would be nice to see those, all the original red lines.
It would be. It would be nice.
Not the first.
So I make a motion, keep this public hearing open until six o'clock on May 13th, 2025, where the Town Board will hear public comments on Articles Four, Five, and Six of the Resi- Zoning Law. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Yes, thank you. I make a motion to adjourn the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. I will now call the regular meeting to order, and we will start with Elliot's approving
Okay, I'll move that Town Board approves minutes from the March 11th, 2025 regular meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and that we approve the special meeting minutes from March 18th, 2025. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Aye.
Aye.
As one step ahead of you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
We're going to wait a minute and let the noise in the room calm down. Is there anyone who has comments on items on the agenda? On the agenda? All right, then we will skip that. I have comments. Elliot will read them. They go from there.
Okay. Okay, supervisor's comments. The Clinton Town Offices, Highway Department, Justice Court Office, and Court will be closed on Friday, April 18th, for Good Friday. Starting on the 18th, the settlement checks for those who are eligible for the Columbia Utility Settlement will start being mailed. Each check will be about $50. Those who receive checks will have 90 days to cash them before the checks are void. For more information, please read the FAQs on the Town website, www.townofclinton.com. For those who observe Lent, the East Clinton Fire Department is having their fish fry every Friday until April 18th, so there's one more to go. This is a takeout only, and the cost is $15 per meal. Call 845-266-5485 for more information. New York State burn ban is in effect from March 10th through May 15th. For more information on what is prohibited to be burned, please visit the DEC website or call 518-402-8452.
That was a question for you.
Oh, yes, and, well, sure. We are having, I was going to mention this later, but the Scenic Roads Committee is sponsoring its annual road cleanup on Saturday.
Twenty-six.
There you go. And so bring your refuse that you pick up along the side of the road. For questions, information, please contact the Chair of the Scenic Roads Committee, Rick McLaughlin. He is at 845-266-83003.
We're going to move on to Town Board reports, and we may as well go with you.
Keep it going? Okay, we'll keep it going. Building inspector report for the month of, month of March. Fourteen building permits issued, nine in the month of February, seventeen CO and CCs issued, as compared to 26, actually, in the month of February. Eight title searches versus seven total cost of construction for the, for the month is $1,5,127. In February, it was substantially higher. It was almost $4 million. Details are on the Town website. Have a short report from the zoning administrator. He reviewed 23 zoning permits, or I'm sorry, 21 zoning permits in the month of March, pretty much steady with previous months. He did, was 22 in the month of February. In terms of types, it was pretty well spread out. Nothing really jumped out in terms of the type of permit being issued. HVAC had three, shed or storage had three, three for pools, and then the rest were twos and ones. Scenic Roads Committee met last Monday, and will be meeting again on the 21st. We talked about the road cleanup on April 26th, which we just talked about briefly. Volunteers are needed. If anybody's interested in volunteering, get in touch with, as I mentioned, Rick McLaughlin, who is the Chair of the Scenic Roads Committee. We also had a conversation about Community Day, which is coming up in, on June 7th, and preparing flyers and/or bookmarks to be distributed on Community Day. And lastly would be Climate Smart Committee, which met on March 25th. Discussed clean energy communities grant funding, submitted and approved to NISERDA along with a grant, very nice $50,000 grant that was received from NISERDA to accompany the $10,000 grant that had been awarded previously. Will be doing work, doing energy study of the Town Highway Garage with the cooperation of, cooperation of Todd Martin and Melissa Karchmer. April 14th, Monday, will be the date of the energy audit to commence. Outreach to Cornell Cooperative Extension, the Chair of the CSC and also the Chair of the CAC, met with new climate and environment educator for the Cooperative Extension to talk about future plans and what he's hoping to do with terms of outreach to municipalities and various activities having to do with Climate Smart Initiative. More discussion about the Climate Action Plan, which the group had started working on and stopped, but will now resume again. Richard Marshall, who is a member of the committee, will be doing the heavy lifting on that one. In terms of future planning, booth at Community Day on June 7th, outreach to the public, of course, and possible composting project. There's some projects going on over in Ulster County, particularly in New Paltz, which might be of interest to us, but obviously would be on a much smaller scale. Anyway, the next meeting is on April 22nd, next door, at the Clinton, Clinton Masonic Hall, and open to the public, so be there if you're interested, please.
Catherine. Okay. The CAC, their meeting is tomorrow, 5:30 in the Masonic Hall. All are welcome. I wanted me to let everyone know, they have submitted reviews of the planning board applications for the proposed East Clinton Fire House, as well as a subdivision on Lake Drive. If you are interested in their reviews, they can be found on the Laserfish Public Portal, found on the Town of Clinton website under Planning Board Projects in Process. Members of the CAC attended the Town's Wetlands Workshops to understand how the DEC changes in the wetlands regulation may impact our law set of 250-78. She wanted to remind you that you can find their agendas and minutes on the Town of Clinton website, the CAC and the CSC. Three members of the CAC attended the 2025 Dutchess County Annual CAC and EMC Roundtable back in March. They continued to do welcome folders, and they wanted me to mention that on the 29th of April, which is a Tuesday, at 6:00 PM, there will be a home composting workshop at the Town of Stanford Town Hall. Their more information, there's a number, 463-6020, but I'm sure you can reach out to the Town of Stanford. And a reminder that their website is clintencac.com. There was no ZVA meeting last month, or, yes, last month, due to a lack of a quorum. Planning Board reviewed that subdivision that I just mentioned, as well as the steep slopes permit, and they helped the Clinton, East Clinton Fire District work on their site plan approval for the firehouse so that they could move forward and get started on getting their funding. That's all I got.
Thank you. Maren.
Okay. The library thanks everyone who was able to attend the 60th birthday party at the Golden Russet on Friday, April 4th. Over 135 people helped celebrate. It was a wonderful community event. The library is still accepting donations for the spring book sale. You can bring your clean, sellable books, CDs, DVDs to the library until Saturday, May 3rd. Donations should be brought downstairs to the basement. Please do not leave them outside the library or Town Hall. A list of what is and isn't acceptable is on the website, or you can call to check. There is one vacancy on the library's Town Board trustees. The library just celebrated 60 years of service to the Town of Clinton, and now they are looking ahead to the next 60 years. Please reach out to Library Director Carol Bancroft to learn more about how you can get involved. The Highway Department, there were a total of three weather-related workdays this month. Heavy winds caused tree damage along various roadways. Our chipper was used to help aid in the cleanup of limbs and branches. Dirt road work was performed on several roads. Stonehouse Road had rock hammered in order to grade and recondition the surface. This improves the roadway and allows it to be more passable. The York rake was also used on the dirt roads to help spread new stone. Shoulder work has been done on Schoolhouse Road. This will help reshape and maintain the shoulder area for better drainage. Culvert pipe and catch basin replacement took place on East Cookingham Lane. Working together with the school districts, the emergency responders, and the local office, the work was completed with minimal disruptions and offered improved drainage system. Signs were replaced on Lake Drive. Surplus in items were inventoried, catalogued, and gathered together for the upcoming sale. Continuing education, several crew members attended a flagger training workshop. Restrictive roadside parking will be lifted on April 15th. No driveway permits were issued this month.
Here.
And maintenance.
Oh.
You want to do maintenance?
Yeah.
The kitchen cabinets in Phase One have been installed and painted. They look great. If you have time, you should go down and look. The highway roof is being repaired even as we speak. Hopefully, those repairs will be finished tomorrow. I think that's about all we have going.
And before I move to Charlie, I just want to welcome you back after your surgery. I'm glad it went well.
Thank you.
And your report.
All right, thank you. Sorry for being late. Recreation Department held their first chess night. I assume it was a success, okay? Coming up in April, the annual Easter egg hunt on Saturday, April 19th, at 11:00 AM at Friends Park, Bring Your Own Basket. The Rec Department is partnering with the Clinton Library to help sponsor Keeping Children Safe Workshop. We held the library at 1:00 PM, April 17th. In May, we can look forward to the first family movie night on Saturday, May 3rd. Doors open at 5:45 right here in Town Hall, showing Disney's Encanto. Our three-on-three basketball tournament will be held May 24th. Elliot, Ray Oberly, and I will form a team. The over-under is two. Looking forward to girls and boys teams in Grade Seven and up. Vendors are needed for the second annual community yard sale to be held at Franmark Park on May 24th. Cost of the table is $10 per table. Cost is $10. Swimming at Franmark Park will open Memorial Day. As always, please check the Recreation Department with any questions. Also, the website and calendars are on the Town Board. Thank you for a fine job, gentlemen and ladies.
Thank you. There is no old business, so moving to new. Maren.
We can approve the court audit, be it resolved that the Town Board hereby approves Resolution Number 16 of 2025, whereby the examination and audit of the Town of Clinton court records for 2024 have been found to be maintained in an organized and proper manner. A copy of this resolution, along with the Appendix Nine Annual Checklist, be forwarded to the Director of Internal Audit, New York State Office of Court Administration for annual filing.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Number Two, Elliot.
Okay, I'll move that Town Board approves the following resolution. Agreement with Hudson Valley Appraisal Corp., Corporation for an appraisal on the Cohen Kramer property for a tax certiori proceeding at the rates listed and authorize, authorizes, empowers, and directs the Town Supervisor to sign the agreement.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, I'll, for the move that the Town Board approves Resolution Number 17 of 2025, authorizing the prosecution of violations of Chapter 250 of the Town Code at 92 Gier Ridge Drive by the zoning administrator and the Town Attorney.
Is there a second?
Second.
I would just say, as per Section 250-88 of the Town Zoning Code, the Town Board is required to approve of the issuance of appearance tickets, and that's what this is. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried.
Okay, hazard communications policy, this is part of a series of policies, updates that we've been working on for our insurance brokers. I believe this may be the last one, at least that's the rumor. So I will move that we, the Town Board approves policy labeled Hazard Communication Program for the Town of Clinton. There's second. I'm, yeah, second.
Second.
Okay. All in favor? Discussion, rather, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Oh, motion carries.
Motion carried.
Mm-hmm. Okay, bond counsel agreement. Do you want to explain this, or should I just?
I will, of course.
Okay. Town Board approves agreement with Oric, Harrington, and Suffcliffs LLP for legal services as listed in the agreement dated March 25th, 2025, for the proposed issuance of notes and/or bonds for the purchase of-
for the proposed issuance of notes and/or bonds for the purchase of highway vehicles, and authorizes, empowers, and directs the town supervisor to sign the agreement.
Is there a second?
Second.
In discussion, this with the following resolution is a bond to go for, to pay for, a town plow truck and a smaller truck, a medium truck. So we need bond attorney to do this for us, and his fee is going to be rolled into the bond. We are, in the next resolution, we are estimating that the trucks will cost about five hundred and thirty-five thousand, but we are authorizing a six hundred thousand dollar bond for increases in price, the bond attorney and those kinds of things. But our town highway plows some county roads, and I think eighteen miles or sixteen miles, sixteen point one, and we get paid every year to do that, and these payments will pay for the bond. So that, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Elliot.
Well, following up on what Michael just said, be it resolved, the Town Board approves Resolution Number Eighteen of two thousand twenty-five, authorizing, subject to permissive referendum, the purchase of two trucks for construction and maintenance purposes for the Town of Clinton, Dutchess County, New York, at a maximum estimated cost of six hundred thousand dollars, and authorizing the issuance of six hundred thousand dollar serial bonds of said town to pay the cost thereof. We have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Do you want?
Okay, sure. Be it resolved that the Town Board approves the purchase of a twenty twenty-four GMC Sierra twenty-five hundred from Romero Chevrolet Buick GMC Inc. at a cost not to exceed sixty-one thousand nine hundred and twenty-two dollars and fourteen cents.
Oh.
From, you got me.
Yeah, we, it's going to be multiple codes. I'll explain it. From multiple codes, budget codes.
That's fine. Okay.
Second.
Second.
So in discussion, this is actually an emergency purchase. There is a truck that the building department uses, our accessory, and it has experienced a mechanical failure, so we need to replace this truck. So it'll come from several lines, budget lines. There are leftover payroll funds from the winter that'll be used. We're selling later on. There's a resolution to sell surplus equipment, which we estimate will bring in twenty thousand, and we can also use surplus funds as a last resort. There are contingency funds, so it'll be a mix and match to do this.
Right. So be it resolved that the Town Board approves the sale of surplus highway.
Wait, 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 wait. So any other?
I'm sorry.
It's all right.
So just to be crystal clear, since we did these two things one after the other, this purchase is not part of the bond. This is coming out of funds.
Right.
Budget, regular budget funds. And I had a follow-up question. Is this, is Romeo on state bid, or? Okay.
I got the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. We can do the last one now.
Okay. Be it resolved that the Town Board approves the sale of surplus highway items through absolute auction, as listed on attachment A.
Second.
Second.
I do.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Under other items, I'm going to take, I have two things. We took a, an item off the agenda tonight, and the reason we did that was there was an error that was noticed kind of late, and I thought it best that we didn't vote on something that the public didn't have a chance to see. So that was taken off the agenda. The other thing I would like to say, it's been two years since my surgery last week, and there was damage to my cerebellum, which controls motor function, and that is why I have gone through some semi-permanent physical changes, most notably in my speech. So I would like to just acknowledge the kindness of the whole community. I have gotten nothing but support, and it really means a lot. But I want to point out, Elliot.
Okay, take a breath.
So the last two years wouldn't have been possible without him. So he covered when I missed time, and then my physical problems led to me not being able to sign things, and.
Well, I can't sign things either.
No, yes, his handwriting is terrible, but he has come in to sign things for me. And as you see, he also, my speech, as it gets later in the day, I have trouble, and Elliot has always let him load, as he is tonight, by reading things for me. So I, I just want to say thanks.
You're welcome.
Yeah. So we can move on to resignations and appointments.
Okay. I'll move that the Town Board accepts the resignation of Richard Archer as Constable effective March seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five. Is there a second?
Second, I can.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Move that we approve the appointment of Roberta Grant as a seasonal cemetery maintenance worker effective April twenty-first, two thousand twenty-five, for thirty hours per week, eighteen dollars and sixty-seven cents per hour for twenty-six weeks. We have a second.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. And finally, that we approve the appointment of Gavin Reichelt as MEO effective April seven, two thousand twenty-five, rate of pay of twenty-three dollars and twenty-two cents per hour, as per the CSE contract, minus a dollar per hour for six months or one thousand hours, and full medical, eye, and dental coverage with an employee, employee contribution of fifteen percent. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Catherine.
Be it resolved that the Town Board approves the April General Fund Warrant, vouchers number one nineteen through one sixty-four A, totaling fifty-five thousand one hundred and thirty-six dollars and forty-three cents, and the April Highway Fund Warrant, vouchers number one hundred through one thirty-one, totaling a hundred and sixty-six thousand six hundred and fifty-eight dollars and thirty-seven cents, and the April Capital Fund Warrant, voucher number five, totaling two thousand two hundred and forty-seven dollars and fifty cents. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to move funds, okay. On behalf of the supervisor, submit the following resolution. Town Board approves Resolution Number Nineteen of two thousand twenty-five, a motion to move funds at the April eighth, two thousand twenty-five Town Board meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And the last one?
Approve the following supervisors' reports. December two thousand twenty-four revised, revised January two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-five, and two thousand twenty-five March. Is there a second?
Second.
You want to speak? No? Okay. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
So now we move to public discussion of things not on the agenda. I assume people want to speak, so I make a motion to open the floor to public discussion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Same rules. Say your name. You have about three minutes. Anyone?
Hi, Michael Fassman on Lake Drive. I must, maybe I'm missing something, but was there the moratorium for the conference center, was that dropped from the agenda? Was the announcement made prior to the meeting that it was announced?
The final agenda was posted this morning, and it was struck from the agenda with the explanation of why.
Thank you.
So just FYI, check the agenda for the meeting, the day of, because the file will be posted.
Thank you, Cal.
Hi, Lisa Metcalf, Nine Partners Road. Just here to remind everybody that we are Friends of Clinton. I am the president of the board. We are a group of neighbors and community members who are creating events to enjoy our beautiful town. We are open for business. Anyone in the town is welcome to come and be a part of it. As a volunteer, as a committee leader, please reach out to us. We have Friends of Clinton Instagram. We nearly just launched a Facebook page where you can find any document needed. We are managing Community Day, and for sure, thank you very much to the board for mentioning Community Day. It's going to be fantastic. We've got a lot of, I'm going to say the old-school things coming back. We're going to have floats, a phenomenal parade. Truly, let's all just come together and enjoy the town that we all love. Thank you.
Wait, wait.
Yes, ma'am.
Once more, the date of Community Day.
June seventh, Saturday. It is no longer the weekend of Labor Day.
And when's the next Friends of Clinton meeting, or?
The next Friends of Clinton meeting, no, the next Community Day meeting is April twenty-third. We did not confirm the location yet. We usually meet at the Clinton Historical Society Building. We may be meeting at East Clinton Firehouse, but we will post the, the location. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa and Catherine.
Hi, Maggie Schimmel Pennig, ninety-five Rinders Road. So I was just so excited to see that that moratorium resolution was on the agenda, the moratorium resolution on the conference center, and I'm very hopeful that as you make those minor corrections, you'll be sure to include, that it should include all pending applications. Right now, as it was originally proposed, six cents would get special treatment, and every new applicant would be under the new law. That makes no sense to me. I wouldn't want to give them a pass just because they're this big corporation with so much power. Every factor that the resolution notes, including things like impact on residents, traffic, open space, our environment, that applies to the proposed six cents resort as well. So I'm almost thankful that it was removed in hopes that that can be addressed when it's proposed again. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Come once? I do once. I make a motion to return to the regular order of business. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I make a motion that the Town Board adjourns this meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you, everyone.
Sweet.
For record. For record. I thought more people would comment on this.